Okay, my phone is off which means it's time to open the regular Montebina's Board of Trustees and we'll begin with the pledge. I'm pleased to introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with a believing justice for all. And please call the roll.
Justice Mathis.
Here.
Justice Gifford.
Here.
Justice Lockwood.
Here.
Justice Rizzo.
Here.
Mayor Katzberg.
Here. And I just want to recognize we have some students from government class from Chalmona School District here. We usually have the Scotia kids but so for you up here, I told them that as we went along, I would take a couple of seconds as we go through our process just to explain what we're doing for and all that kind of stuff.
Just to let you guys know, the Rotterdam Town Board meetings are usually fairly entertaining.
We've been so soon.
Everybody you see here is an employee of the village. We have no residents here so typically that's our meeting, we're pretty quiet. Okay, so item number three is we're gonna have Steve Looby kinda just run quickly through the audit that we have. For you guys, annually, we do an audit which is Steve Looby's and his company come through and they check our, not only our books as far as the financials for the village, but also the way that we manage the money of the village because you're working with public funds and taxpayers' money. So he just makes sure that the things that we're doing and the processes that we use are correct and up to standards in auditing terms. He is an independent auditor, he doesn't work for the village, we hire him to come and do that, and then he gives a report back to the board to let us know how we're doing as far as managing our money. So, Steve, whenever you're ready.
I believe everybody has a copy of the audited financial statements. I'll try and hit the highlights, the notes and everything like that are consistent from one year to the next, basically the numbers change. But the, what you're basically paying for is the independent orders report, which means we come in, we look at your financial statements, and then depending on the, you know, the results of our test report, we gather enough evidence to express an opinion on the financial statements. The financial statements themselves are prepared according to the financial procedures prescribed by the New York State Comptroller's Office, alright? It's like a two-page independent orders report, and if you look on the second page where it says the independent, or the opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting, it's what they would call a clean, you're basically looking for a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, basically saying that the numbers in the financial statements represent fairly, or fairly present the activity and the financial position of the village, alright? I'm gonna just try and highlight a couple of things on the general, the water and the sewer. The next page is the general fund, which is your balance sheet, is where you stood at the end of the village's fiscal year. If you look at the second line from the bottom here, total fund balances, 1.5 million, alright? And if we go to the next page, which is your revenue and expense for the general fund, if we look in the third column where it says actual, the third number from the bottom, 77,000, that's basically your profit if you wanna look at it, your surplus for the year. On your, on a revenues of 6.8 million, you know, you're, you're pretty much broke even in the general fund. One thing I did notice is your original budget, revenue and expenses compared to your actuals, for the most part, you know, your actual numbers hit pretty close to what you budgeted, you know, for the beginning of the year. What I've run into some other municipalities is their budgets, I don't say are unrealistic, but they budget one set of numbers and then the actuals come in significantly different. You guys really don't have that situation here. So, pretty much comes down to your budgets at the beginning of the year truly reflect what you, you know, you did for the year. The water fund, the next page, if we look in the actual column, third number from the bottom, $33,000 profit if you wanna look at it that way, kinda broke even. The one that's, has some significance is in the sewer fund, the next page. If we look at the bottom of the page, you look at the third column again, we had a $431,000 surplus, alright? The reason for that is the surcharges that the city was charging us, we had those forgiven when we renegotiated the contract. So that was like $350,000 that we had been showing as a payable to the city that were waived, so that's why it hit the bottom line in this year, alright? That's pretty much it for the AF, or the water sewer and general fund. The notes, I'll, pretty much just saying, I know everybody was here, same as last year, just some of the numbers changed, just to give some explanations to what's in the financial statements. If we go after the notes, after the 14 pages of notes, there's another schedule, or another page with some numbers on it. That's what your federal funds that you received during the year, either directly or passed through the state or county, that's the reason why you have what they call a federal single audit. Anytime you receive over 500,000 of federal funds, it's now switched to 750, you're required to get this audit. So that just spells out what your federal funds were, and that does get reported to the federal government through our data collection form. Couple pages later, there are two more reports, and they're reports on the internal control of the village, of our testing of the internal control, and on compliance with certain laws and regulations as they apply to the federal grants. The last page of the report is a schedule of findings and question costs as it relates to the single audit. There were no findings, there were no question costs, and this is just another thing that also gets reported to the federal government. I know I went over kinda quick, any questions or anything like that? It's kind of a, if you're looking for a clean, uneventful audit, that's pretty much what you're looking for. I'll go on to another letter here, I'm not sure if you got a copy of it, but it might have been in the email that got sent out. One of, one of the things as auditors that we have to do is when we're done with the audit, we have to communicate to the governing board, which is the village board, any findings that we had, any problems that we had, any disagreements that we had with management, in this case, B. Maria, like if we wanted to book something and she said, "No, we're supposed to kinda, you know, discuss that with the board or notify the board." Any other problems that we had. Basically it comes down to, we had no findings as related to this that we had to communicate to the board, but we do have to provide that letter to the board in writing. One of the other things we also do is we do an audit of the court clerk's operations, alright? Pretty much, you know, tying the, the money that came in and came out. The only findings that we had on that, bank reconciliations, alright? They should be doing bank reconciliations every month, there's not a lot of activity that precludes you from doing a bank, a bank reconciliation, alright? For the simple reason that if a deposit gets missed, there should be a formal procedure that should be done. I know there was some changeover, but now with the new person, you know, she should be trained or at least taught how to do the bank reconciliation. The other thing that has always been an issue is the bail listing. If you took a listing of all the bail that's held, it should reconcile to the amount in our bail account. That was been, it's been reduced and reduced to the small difference, but I still wanna bring that up to the board's attention. Outside of that, I know I went over kinda quick, questions, concerns, and also to the board, at any point during the year, feel free to give us a call if you have questions, any of the trustees, you know, call us directly.
The only comment I would make for the rest of the trustees is the one thing that you wanna look at is the letter to management, those are, that's basically the narrative of, the summary of all the findings, so.
So Steve, with the justice balance, what is, what's the thing with the bail? I mean, I know it was, it was way up and you said it's getting better.
It's getting better. What happens is if...
Where does that show up on the sheet?
It, it, it won't show, what happens is, let me just quickly explain, if you have, if you took a listing of all the bail that you're holding for people, okay? That might total up to $10,000, say you got, you know, 10 people at a thousand bucks a piece or whatever, that would be the 10,000. That number should equal what's in the bail checking account, alright? There should be no more or no less, alright? For years, the bail records weren't tracked perfectly, so there was a slight difference, alright? They did, they were able to reconcile, but some of the amounts on the bail listing go back several years. So my point is, I guess they should come up with a good bail listing, alright? Say, this is what we should have, make sure our checking account ties to that, and, you know, it should be clean going forward, there really should be no difference. For example, there might have been people that were on the, on the bail listing from four years ago, their bail got returned, their name never got taken off the bail listing. So, a couple of people have gone back and, you know, a couple of prior clerks have gone back and tried to find out, researched the files, and that, that's where it eliminated a lot of difference, but we still have a slight difference.
My opinion is I need to meet with Jason because, you know, it's his responsibility to make sure that these things are done. The one thing with the bail is, once you go back a certain number of years, if you consider it either abandoned or forfeited, that's gotta be turned back to the state for, what do you call them, forfeited funds or something?
Yeah, forfeit, yeah.
So, so that's, that's just, the line has to be drawn of where can we, where can we identify that this bail came from and belongs to, and when we get past that point, that's gotta go back to the state, and then they'll, they'll worry about it, we shouldn't be holding it, so.
Most probably, if people are entitled to their bail coming back, they've probably come, you know, come for it, so you're probably not holding on. The last thing you wanna happen is if you have 10 people with a thousand dollars that you're on the list, and they all showed up the same day, you don't, you don't wanna have $8,000 in your account, that would present the problem.
Any other questions for Steve? Thanks very much. Okay, thank you for your time. See you this time next year.
Thank you.
So Chris, our plan is to talk to Jason, Judge Framon, about the, about this?
Yeah.
Okay, see what his plan is to kinda...
It's getting better, but we need to get that up.
Yeah, create some sort of protocol to...
It, it should be simple, but it should be Jason that, that shows his new clerks that this needs to be done and how it's done. And basically, we're getting past the age where people even know where a checkbook is and how to balance it, but basically it's balancing your checkbook, so.
But then there's gotta be a starting point too about when we think that the account is accurate, right?
Well, no, okay, so there's two things, so the reconciliation is just a month-to-month exchange of money, the money they take in, the money that's deposited, that's gotta, that's gotta match. The bail is a second topic, so the bail is, the bail has gotta be decided where archiving stops, where we know whose money it is, and where that, wherever that is, that line has to be drawn, and those funds that are left over, the, to balance in the account, needs to go to the state. And that's, we've been, I've been trying to get that done for, since I've been here.
And it appears that they're saying three years in this letter.
Yeah.
Three years is the cutoff.
So, and then even if you know, it still goes in, it'll be on that list where you can look and see if your name's on any unclaimed funds. So, yeah, it's a job to get it. Any other discussion on that?
Well, is there anything we can do to help?
Yeah, you can get Jason to take care of it.
Uh, the water, the sewer fund situation here, so you explained that we budgeted for, we have, it sounds like a pretty significant surplus, so we budgeted for non-forgetness of those...
Yeah, we never, we never had those fees because they were, they, they were disputed.
Because we never paid them, right?
Right, we never paid them, they were disputed.
But they were booked as a payable.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've never...
So we don't have this amount of money just sitting on our fund balance, right?
Well, it's always been in that account, but it wasn't on that line because we had it as payable.
Okay, alright, makes sense.
Anything else? Alright, move on to item number four, which is privilege of the floor, and just in case you guys don't know, a privilege of the floor is the time that anybody from the community can address the board of trustees. Typically, it's not a conversation back and forth, sometimes we get into one because we're so small here, but it's just a time the public can address the board of trustees on any topic they want to, except for pending legislation that we're gonna do a motion on because we have a separate public hearing for that. So, right now I'm gonna open privilege of the floor, anybody care to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll close privilege of the floor, and we'll move on to item number five, which is local law 2015C to amend the code relating to our dog park regulations. So, again, for you guys, we built a dog park, we have the rules for our dog park, the hours port and all that, but when you do something like that, you have to actually make it law, so that if there's a dispute or something like that, you can actually send a police officer down there and say, "No, you can't be in the park," and in today's world, everything's gotta be a law. So, the law that we're talking about today is the rules for the dog park. We, to make a law, you have to do, it's a two-month process. The first thing you do is introduce it, we did that last month, then there's one month for the public to know about that law, look at it, research it if they want to. Tonight, we're gonna adopt it, it will become law tonight, and so tonight, we're gonna have a public hearing just for anybody that wants to be heard about it, and then we'll take a vote on whether or not we adopt the law and make it, make it our code. So with that, I'm gonna open the public hearing, anybody here care to be heard, local law 2015C? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Justice Mathis.
Yes.
Justice Gifford.
Yes.
Justice Lockwood.
Yes.
Justice Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Katzberg.
Yes. Item number six is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign this Connecticut County Stop DWI Agreement, and this is where we get funding for, to do road checks to catch people driving while intoxicated.
Make a motion. I'll second it.
Any discussion on that one? Please call the roll.
Justice Mathis.
Yes.
Justice Gifford.
Yes.
Justice Lockwood.
Yes.
Justice Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Katzberg.
Yes.
Item number seven is my comments to the board. I just wanna say publicly, I'm not gonna steal your thunder, but I'm gonna say publicly that I thought the holiday on the avenue was great, I liked the format of it, I liked the time, I loved the weather, the new things that were added were good, and the, it seemed like the new, the co-chairs that we have and the committee that have worked on it really have a lot of energy, and the first thing I heard when I got down there was they got new ideas for next year too, so. So, I'll let you take it when it's your turn, Joe, but I just wanna say I had a great time at it. Kudos to, to Andrew and his guys. Annually, we, we get an award from the state for excellence in fluoridating our water, so we got that once again this year and...
Good job. What, what does that require, by the way? Drop it, what does that require you to do?
It's a, there's a separate building at the pump house, it comes in tubs, and then there's a, a small pump, and it, it just feeds it in based on the flow.
Okay, so like consistently throughout the year, you don't have to worry about it?
You just have to check the levels and, and make sure that it's pumping the right amount. Unlike chlorine, we chlorinate, like everybody does, to disinfect. Chlorine, chlorine's very hazardous, as Ken knows. Fluoride, you have to be very careful about how it's dosed, you could actually kill someone with, with fluoride, chlorine, you can make people sick. You know, if you overchlorinate the water, you just get a lot of smell, but fluoride is a, you have to be very careful about how it's dosed.
I know you grew up in Scotia, you ever moved someplace that didn't Florida, your dentist asked you if, if your community Florida's or not because, especially with kids, anti-house fluoride treatments, everything if you don't do it, so. I was invited and able to attend the, the training the fire department did when, just before they demolished the building down on Glen Avenue there, so they smoked the building and they went in and did what Tom and, and the firefighters typically do, and I've been there and seen it in the past, but this time they actually invited me to go in, and I would recommend that experience to anybody that lives in a house and thinks that when there's a fire, they're gonna save their dog before they go out or anything else, because literally, three steps into the building, you could not see a single thing. So I was left the stairs to the second floor, I spent a little time on the second floor, I could hear firefighters going by me, I could hear things happening, went back down the stairs by feel and couldn't see a single thing till I got back out again, it was really an eye-opening experience, so.
Or eye-opening maybe.
Yeah, exactly, it really would be a good, I think that going in there and seeing that would make people absolutely have an exit plan for their house, because there's no way that you're gonna get out if you don't have the plan, so. So, it was good, it was a good experience. This is brand new, as of today, I met with the modacris who, who owned the, what they call Grand Union Plaza, and the Scotia Motel, they're proposing to demolish the Scotia Motel and find a franchise, sign a franchise for a quality inn.
Comfort Inn.
Comfort Inn, Comfort Inn, and, so, they're asking the planning board to meet, expedite a meeting this month because they have until December 27th to sign a franchise agreement, but they're hoping that with a casino coming in and there being no other venue except for Glen Sanders, that, that'd be a good project for them, so we'll see how that goes with the planning board. And then my last, I guess I don't have to because apparently everybody signed up for it, but I just wanted to mention our party this Friday, our annual holiday party, and those are my comments. Item eight correspondences here is on special committee reports, trustee Mathis.
How's the new report?
Trustee Gifford.
We had a fire department meeting, uneventful, we had a planning board meeting on Monday and approved the drive-through for Dunkin' Donuts a long ways.
Good, good. Was that uneventful as well?
Yes.
What's, yeah, what's going on, it usually said Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I ran into Mike Horan, and he says he's trying to work out some sort of agreement with...
Well, it, it basically, the planning board just, or Lydia helped us decide that they really didn't have any, much input and much, you know, responsibility for that, so.
Okay, so he's kinda backed off, Mike Horan?
Yeah, he kinda put his coat on and left. But I think, I mean...
But he's not like threatening litigation or anything about the right way?
Well, I mean, it depends on how it goes, I, they were certainly talking about the possibility of litigation, if they, you know, if they completely block off the right of way.
Really shouldn't be with us, and I, I'm playing phone tag with Mike because he just wasn't sure really how it ended, I think, or the details, but it's a disagreement between them, where they would have to prove their rights really to change things.
Right.
They're making a claim, but, you know, there's no hard proof of it.
Okay.
And I'm relatively sure that the Dunkin' Donuts people haven't consulted with an attorney.
They have or haven't?
I don't think so, which seems strange to me, but I, I mean, they're, they're very confident that they own it and, and there's no reason that they're...
The guy Ken O'Leary said is very confident about it.
Is that making it one way? So they're making it one way, or they're stopping at the...
I, I don't know how, I mean, they, they can't, the thing is that they can't really, the, the traffic flow is gonna be out of Dunkin' Donuts through that thing, and so you won't be able to get to Dunkin' Donuts like you can now going up that alley.
Will you be able to get to the other two buildings coming?
Well, that's a matter for debate, I mean, that's what, I, I, see, and I don't think there's anything they can do to prevent somebody doing that, but they're gonna mark it so that it's one, it's exit only.
That was my impression, that's how it's gonna work out, they're gonna mark it exit only and people are gonna drive any way they want to.
Exactly, I think so, but, but we kinda decided that the village, that the village is proud of it.
Anything else on that one? Trustee Lockwood.
Uh, do you guys want me to update everybody now about my meeting with the, the special events coordinator for the county regarding the, okay, so I met with Jason, his last name's, I think, Lookyer, uh, he's the special events coordinator for the county, I wanted to run, run some ideas by him regarding Kevin's idea about the village-wide open house. He's very, very helpful, very knowledgeable, he's got some very good relationships with local business people, he did have some suggestions about how to brand the, the open house, he thought getting some local organizations like the Lions Club Rotary involved, as well as Little League, maybe Highland Soccer, and provide, somebody from, get a representative from each of those organizations and maybe have them be part of the, the open house and have them accessible to provide information about the other parts of what the village provides besides what, you know, the, the municipal services. I certainly thought that that was a good idea, kind of expanding the, the idea of what we're looking to do. He was not able to commit any time at that moment to kind of either help or head the, the organizational part of it, but he certainly said that we could, we could keep communicating with him. So, I think that's gonna be very helpful. I think we gotta get a, Kevin and I are gonna have to get a, a more specific concept together on paper that we can hand out to people so that they know exactly what we're talking about. And Jason, he offered to help with that, and he thinks it's a great idea, he, he did mention one issue that I kind of agreed with was, you know, if you guys wanna make, if we wanna make this like a yearly event, well, you know, we may have some inventory this year, but what happens if our inventory's low one year and there's only like one or two houses for sale in the village? Then, he suggested that instead of making it, calling it an open house, or, you know, making it a real estate open house, that we would kinda make it, come see the village type, come learn about the village, and there, make the real estate part of it, kind of a part of it, but not the main focus of it. So, just an idea that he had suggested, and I asked him about printing for the printing materials, he brought up a, a few people, a few businesses that might be able to provide some assistance and get us some, some quotes, and that's about it.
Alright, thanks, good luck. Justice Rizzo.
We had a meeting of the memorial day for a new chair, she's reorganizing all the paperwork and getting things well organized, so when we start on this thing, we should be a lot organized, and she's doing a good job of it, everybody's got their own little, she's assigned everything to everybody, so they're working on it, trying to get it a lot organized than it was before. And everybody know we had holiday on the avenue, which was very successful this year, we had a couple new items, the horse and hay ride was a very big hit, and we're gonna add some new stuff to it next year and switch it around a little bit, and we may do something more than, like you said, maybe the chili, maybe we'll switch it over, maybe do a soup or something like that, we're talking about that in the committee, so. Sean had a lot of people from his organization help out, it was nice to have people other than just the three of us trying to put this thing together, which made it a lot smoother to run. It was very well organized, we had a really good time, everybody seen that, really enjoyed, especially with a little parade we had, they thought it was really nice, so. It was good, and we hope to do a little bit better the next year. That's all we got to report.
Thanks. Item number nine is the departmental reports, just for you guys, each of our departments submits a report to the trustees to tell them about the activities in their department for last month. So anybody have any questions or comments on the departmental reports? Anybody care to move to accept them?
I'll move to accept them.
I'll second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 10 is the audit of claims, the audit of claims is all of our bills for this month, it's us paying our bills, so I assign two trustees and they go over every single bill that we're gonna pay, just so that they see it, they see what we're paying for, what we, you know, what we've done for the month, so they're our committee for the, the audits, so one of them will move and the other will second and then we'll pay our bills. Audit of claims.
I'll move to pay our bills.
I'll second it. Usually goes lights more than that.
You're still the thunder.
Any discussion on that? Please call the roll.
Justice Mathis.
Yes.
Justice Gifford.
Yes.
Justice Lockwood.
Yes.
Justice Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Katzberg.
Yes, and if you wonder why, sometimes I say, "All in favor, say aye," and then sometimes we vote, if it's a financial matter or a legal matter, I call for individual votes, but if it's just something where we're saying, "Thank you for your reports," we just all say aye, so we don't have to go through that. Item number 11, I hope that you guys looked at this, because I did look at them, I did mark on my agenda who was in attendance at each meeting, so I know we have some extensions, so I hope that you remember which meetings you were at and which you were not, so here we go.
Hold on, hold on.
Item number 11 is the approval of the minutes of the October 22nd special meeting of the trustees.
Maria, the, Michael Horan's name is with an A, not a, oh, a U, it was a U, not a, it's with an O, not a U, Horan.
H-O-R.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll move with your approval.
I'll second.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Kevin can.
Do we have to do them separately?
Right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, okay.
And any extensions?
I'd second it.
Item number twelve is the approval of the minutes of the November third village special meeting of the trustees.
That's you again.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Item thirteen, approval of the minutes of the November tenth regular meeting of the board trustees. This was the good one.
I'll make a motion. You got your turn today.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
No.
No, you two weren't.
At the same time, we're not there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Standing and jumping out of windows.
Item number fourteen, new business. Do any trustees have any new business for us tonight?
Is this what we're doing? This?
No, that's the last thing before German.
But that's for last, I guess.
Yep. I only have one piece of new business. I just wanna give you a heads up because we're very close to the implementation of the town's fourteen fifteen budget. And I think you know that last year I had an issue with some of the shifting of the costs and I got the same issue again this year, and I just wanna make sure that you're aware of it. So on this sheet, I I'm giving it to you so you have the numbers. Last year, you might remember that the town had vacated a longstanding agreement that we had with them to that the town residents would fund the cost of their parks, the village residents would fund the cost of our parks. And we call it a. And really, it was a better agreement than that because the town also gave us a significant amount of money toward the summer programs in our parks cuz they don't run any summer programs. So over the years, the amount of money that they gave us for our summer programs has dwindled down from seventeen thousand at one time to one thousand now. And then last year, they shifted the cost of running their parks to the general fund, which means the village residents are now helping to pay for that as well. And the result was the levy to village residents last year went up by eleven point four four percent. The levy to people in the town outside the village went down by point six eight percent. Now, in twenty fifteen sixteen, what has happened is the town has reassigned Dana Gilgor, their town engineer, and to the position of deputy highway superintendent and taken his salary and put it into the general fund, which means now we're paying, those residents are helping to pay for his salary. If he was if he still does the engineering tasks that he did, that's gonna be a big issue because you can't do that. What I'm told is that he now is a deputy highway superintendent and his engineering tasks have been assigned to the code enforcement department. So being.
But do we pay? We don't pay the highway, do we?
Yes. We pay a portion of the highway stuff, yeah. And so the result of doing that now is that in this year's town tax, the levy to the village residents is going up by five point seven nine percent. The town levy is going up, but only to the people outside the village, it's only going up by point seven four percent. So we're seeing year after year this shift of the cost of running the town being inordinately shifted over to village residents, in my opinion. So a couple of questions that are important is, first of all, what's gonna be reimbursed? So we have the reimbursement program through the state where, you know, if you meet the two percent, any any rise in your levy gets reimbursed to you by the state. You're supposed to get a check for it. The question is, what are we gonna get? Do you are we gonna get the entire eleven point four four percent reimbursed to us? Or are we gonna get up to the two percent? And we get stiff for the rest of these, the the other seven percent. Nobody knows yet. The state can't say they don't have it figured out yet. They can't even figure out when they're gonna mail the checks, but they. So we don't know. I guess we'll find out when we get our check. And the other issue I have is that while the town has reduced their support for our summer program down to a thousand dollars, they've taken that money and they've increased their support to Freedom Park and the parade. Meanwhile, they're taxing village residents to fund to help fund that increase while the village is already spending the overtime, you know, all the maintenance and so we're paying double for those things, so. I haven't had any headway in trying to rectify what I think are injustices about that, but I just wanted to inform you guys my feelings on this whole thing. Cuz that's my job. Okay, any other new business for them?
I just wanna say have a good holiday. I mean, we got Christmas coming up and New Year's coming up, so I hope everybody has a good holiday for everybody. Safe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Christmas.
People cooking are.
The thing with the motel. Should we? There was some email this afternoon about people couldn't make it or something like that. We should push that, shouldn't we? I assume.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I would.
I should push it.
Yeah, I would hope that. I know Greg had asked a question, Greg Zeman. I didn't see anything from anybody else on committee, but yeah, I would hope that.
Okay.
Could be a little convenient, so. Greg, let's move on to item number fifteen, which are organizational appointments. So most cases, I already told you guys, I told you what we're doing here. State law says that the mayor is the appointing authority for these jobs with the approval of the trustees. So these are my the list that we're gonna read through are my appointments to the people. The trustees will make a motion in a second and a vote to approve my appointments and those people will have their positions for an answer. So I think we already have people that are gonna do. You ready?
Absolutely.
Do you know their job here?
I think so.
I think so.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion in a second for Kate Toomes to be our acting village justice.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Oh, and then a motion in second for Trustee Gifford as deputy mayor.
You're just appointed.
I just appointed, okay. I'm looking for a motion in second for Kristen Bodie to serve as our village justice clerk for the next year.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't think there was a.
We'll take a vote on Kate Toomes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looking for a motion for Louis Aguero is our billing inspector for a term of one year.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is gonna be a tough one. I'm looking for a motion for Maria Schmitz to be our board secretary for the next year.
We'll all move it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looking for a motion for Lisa Holst to be reappointed to the planning board for a term of five years.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm looking for another motion to appoint Lisa Holst as the chair of the planning board.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looking for a motion to appoint Carl Herzog. He was appointed to fill a vacant term. So he's only been on the board for one year. This would be to reappoint him now to a full term on the planning board for two years.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looking for a motion to appoint Newey as the clerk to the planning board.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for to appoint Harold Bryant as a member of the zoning board, and he's in the same situation. He was appointed to fulfill an expired term, so this would be a full term for him.
I'll make the motion.
Question. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looking for a motion to appoint Tom Tavirio as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for Kathy Buscher to be the clerk to the ZBA.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Look for a motion to appoint John Jones to be the resident member of the traffic safety committee.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I need a second to have Andrew co-op me on the traffic safety committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna, this is a typo. It's gonna is it gonna be John or Pete as chair for the traffic safety committee?
Yeah. He's not here.
He's not here, so it's him. This is gonna be the last meeting. He misses for a while. Right, then a second to appoint Pete Frzoni as chair for the traffic safety committee.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we already appointed him chair, so I need a second to have him appointed to the traffic safety committee.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looking for a second to appoint Chief Alme to the traffic safety committee.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then looking for a second for Todd Lander as our DOT expert to the traffic safety committee.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looking for a second to have Carl Gant be the planning board member on the traffic safety committee.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then looking for a second for Kathy Buscher to be a clerk to the traffic safety committee.
Wendy Waters. Pete, a police clerk.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
Sorry.
I'm glad you caught it cuz I didn't know.
Once Pete took over, Wendy's doing it.
Okay, so I'm looking for a second then to have Wendy Boras appointed to the.
I'll second.
As a clerk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Need a motion in a second to appoint Gordy LeVail to be a member of the examining board of plumbers.
I'll second.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did you see Maria? I think you guys named spelled wrong, too.
Yes, it was an E in Gordy's name. W D V I E L A. And then I need a motion in a second to ratify the assignments to the trustees.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I need a motion in a second to authorize the bonding for the clerk treasurer, the deputy clerk treasurer, the village clerk, the just clerk to the justice, the village justice and the acting justice.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion in second to name the Daily Gazette as the official newspaper of the village.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Make a motion in second to name First National Bank of Bank, the Bank of America, Key Bank and TD Bank as a designated official depositary depositories for the village.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion in a second that our clerk treasurer, Maria Schmitz, is directed to pay principal and interest on all her bonds and other obligations.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion in a second that that the trustees authorize our important people to attend in the important conferences.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm gonna move. I need a second to nominate Chief Frzoni and Chief Alme to the town of Glenville's public safety board.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Need a motion in a second to set the pay rate as adjusted by the IRS for mileage.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna move and need a second to appoint Trustee Gifford as a marriage officer for the village.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
I hesitated, sorry.
And then I'm hoping you all got a chance to review our procurement policy. Trying to read it, don't you? So I need a motion in a second to adopt to readopt our procurement policy.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then Beverly and George George Solotra agreed to be the historian and community guard coordinator respectively.
I'll make the motion.
I didn't even need it.
I know.
Any other topics before we adjourn?
Just wanna say the dog park is looks like it's being used. I was down there a couple of days and like four or five dogs down there. Last time I was on it, like six, so.
They got the tags?
Yeah, they have the old tags on it.
We're looking at in summary of enforcement, probably a swipe card system because we have a significant number of people without tags. And we just got our first complaint that somebody without tags was in there and and gave their dog kennel cough and. Jesus. So we'll see how that works out. Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Go be.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.